Good morning, everybody. It is 9:03 and we will start the weekly county board meeting. I will ask everybody in the chamber to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the public, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act here in a binder behind the podium, right there. In the back of the room, somewhere there, there's an automatic defibrillator for health purposes. And with that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization meeting. Madam Clerk.
Mike Boyle? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Borgeson?
Present.
Chair Rogers?
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Item B is a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, is the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, is that second? Motion, uh, second by Commissioner Friend. Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Roll call Zoom and those in the facility, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh and Borgeson are voting yes virtually. Commissioner Morgan is absent at the time. All Commissioners in the press, in the chamber, voting yes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization items. Board of Equalization items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Yes, ma'am. Note the light system in front of you. It'll, you got five minutes and it'll give you a warning.
Okay. My name is Lynda Davis. I live at 10215 West Center Road, Omaha, and I live with Paul Bellinger, who is usually present, he's not here today. I wanted to speak about our West Center Road and the traffic. We have approached-
Um, I'm gonna hold you, ma'am. I don't know if that's a Board of Equalization matter.
Okay, so is there another time then?
Yeah, there will be.
Okay, thanks.
Alrighty. Anybody want to speak on the Board of Equalization matters? Seeing none. We'll go on to items D, E, F, G, and H. Is there a motion by the board to approve those items? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, is that second? Second by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. And does that include adjournment, Commissioner Boyle? Alrighty, there's a motion to approve items D, E, F, G, H, and adjourn. Please roll call Zoom and everybody in the chamber, please vote.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Borgeson, yes.
Commissioner, uh, voting yes virtually.
Thank you. We'll now call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, roll call.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Present.
Item one is amendments and claims. Letter A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and processed through Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, is that second? Second by Commissioner Mike Friend. In the chamber, please vote. Roll call Zoom, please.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh and Borgeson, yes virtually.
There is, there are five items on the consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Mike Boyle, is that second by Commissioner Mike Friend? Hearing nothing. Roll call Zoom, please, and in the chamber, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh and Borgeson voting yes virtually.
Item three is recognition and proclamations. Letter A is a resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month in Douglas County, Nebraska, Commissioners Mary Ann Borgeson and Maureen Boyle. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Thank you, everybody. So, March does designate the beginning of Women's History Month, and Mary Ann Borgeson and I would like to present this resolution. It was Mary Ann's idea, which I really appreciate. So, whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987, and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States of America in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and whereas the National Women's History Alliance, which was instrumental in establishing the celebratory month, selects and publishes the theme each year, and whereas since many of the women's suffrage centennial celebrations originally scheduled for 2020 were curtailed, the National Women's History Alliance is extending the annual theme for 2021 to, quote, "valiant women of the vote, colon, refusing to be silenced," unquote, and whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history, and whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and establishing early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, whereas women have also served our country courageously in the military. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes March as Women's History Month and continues to honor the many incredible achievements of women in Douglas County, Nebraska, and throughout the nation dated the second day of March 2021, and make a motion.
Second by Commissioner Mike Friend. Commissioner Borgeson, do you want to say anything?
Well, I'm just very honored to, um, to bring this resolution forth with Commissioner Boyle. It says a lot in the resolution, but I think it points out again the importance of women not only in the political scene, but in many scenes that we are a part of, and so I'm very proud of it, and thank Commissioner Boyle for co-sponsoring it with me.
Commissioner Mike Boyle.
The only comment I really have to make about this is that, I'll just say this, women make history.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, there's a motion and a second. Please vote in the chamber and please roll call Zoom.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
We'll go to item four, which is citizens' comments for the county board. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners-related items that are not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Thank you. My name is Lynda Davis. I reside at 10215 West Center Road. I live with Paul Bellinger, who has been here a couple times. He is ill today. I wanted to talk about the street on center in front of us. We're at basically 102nd and Center. We have contacted the mayor. Mr. Kavanaugh is our representative, the past Mr. Pauls. It is a R2 neighborhood. We have truck traffic, pretty much a freeway in front of our street. The trucks, there are bumps in the streets that the trucks hit, wake us up at 2:00 in the morning. When, uh, our windows shake, our pictures fall off of the wall. I work from home. It's quite a disruption. I have lived there for 10 years, and nothing has been done about it. We had suggested there's a light right there, maybe that it goes flashing to slow down the traffic or slow down the speed. You know, I think it's 40, but there's houses on both sides of that street, all the way from basically 108th to probably 96, um, that are, we're all affected. All of my neighbors are affected, but they have, you know, nobody else has really, like, come forth like us. We pay taxes every year, quite a bit of taxes, and our property value does go down from that. Just wondered who we can talk to about the traffic, about fixing the street. So, the mayor said, when COVID came out, you should work from home. Well, we do. And if you have a problem with the street, then, you know, puts up some kind of barrier to... So now we have built a couple structures. Every two weeks, a city inspector comes out and gives us a notice about we should pull down that structure. And we're, it's, we have told people it is a noise abatement situation. Our last one was, you know, put, put it down or we're, you're gonna be some legal action, or we're gonna come down and take it down ourselves, or it needs a permit. It does have a permit for a carport. It is not finished because we started in the fall and then winter came. So, it is going to be a carport. We also have a fence, which, these are noise abatements. What are we to do if the city and the mayor will not do anything about our street disruption and the noise? So, just wondered who we can go to, how we can stop the inspector from coming out and threatening us every two weeks? So, any feedback would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a point, I think you're, there's nothing we can do in that because of jurisdiction. But to me, it's a clear thing of the city council's jurisdiction. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Citizens' comments?
I have a hand up.
We can't comment during this, Commissioner Kavanaugh, unless you have a question of fact. I'm not to hold you off on that. Larry?
I didn't quite hear you.
I'm responding, I was responding, Commissioner Kavanaugh. You, it's on you.
The masks don't help, but. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. With the elections coming up today, I want to speak about a couple of things that are going on down at the State House and being supported by this body as well as the city council. Changing some of our election laws, and one of them is appointing election commissioners rather than electing them. But the, the central issue really is across this country, and we're jumping on the bandwagon to change some election laws, which imply to me that we're admitting in the State Houses that there are some problems with elections. However, they turn people like me into enemies because we objected to problems with the recent election. So, if they were so smart about the election laws, why did everything go awry and why are they changing them now? People need to take a look at what's on the agenda down there and what's on the agenda from these two bodies to support the legislation that is going on. One of those things is, a couple of those things down there too have to do with racism. One of them is changing Arbor Day to Malcolm X Day or Juneteenth Day. I think it's Juneteenth Day, but also formal recognitions of Malcolm X. I'd like to submit something from a professor at Hillsdale College that gives a opposite view of the national agenda on systemic racism. All cultures throughout history have had some sort of slavery and racism. So, I'd like to counter with this. And speak about the cancel culture agenda that's going on through our country. American people better wake up because the progressive movements are trying to change a lot of things about our United States of America, including the Constitution. And if they don't set up, pay attention now, it'll be lost forever. Things are moving very rapidly, and before you know it, the Constitution will no longer apply anywhere. The main thing under assault right now is freedom of speech. There is one item down at the state involving requiring the public to be able to comment at all public meetings. But we see there's a lot of ways to change what the definition of public meeting is. And it doesn't spell out what they're going to do with that bill. They have to debate it yet. But the founding fathers also told us, don't trust your government entirely. The, the first 10 amendments were to protect citizens against the encroachment of legislative bodies. And I think they also meant possibly your state legislatures, which have the power for most of our purposes in the elections and everything. But you have to be watching them, listening to them, because you don't know what they're gonna do until they've done it. Thank you.
Anyone else commenting on citizens' comments?
Yes, I have a citizens' comment.
You can hold. Come on, Louise.
My turn. Thank you. Lucy Menace, 3306, Burt Street. I want to comment on some financial matters. The funding from federal money coming from Congress for local government, which I assume is the Douglas County. Reason being is that there's gonna be a lot of money coming in for this area, and it hasn't been passed yet. So, I want to relay some things that I understand that are, are part of the stimulus. And that's 350 billion, 350, 350 billion for state, local, and tribal governments, many of which have experienced a reduction in tax revenue as a result of the pandemic. And then there's also some items for small business, which, I don't know, a lot about the numbers, but the PPP that's on this package is supposed to triple the, the award. So, the small businesses are getting triple what they got last year. That may be true. I'm not, I'm not sure. There's 15 billion for targeted ecotomic injury disaster loan. It's 1.9 trillion dollars. It's a lot of money and it's a lot of information. So, I'm trying to make sure that I understand, so when it gets passed, that we're prepared with financing. It's, and something that's on, not, not on your agenda, but it was previously, that this package was being called CARES, CARES Act 2. That's not what the, the pack, the federal stimulus is called. I think it's the American Rescue Plan Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber? Seeing no one else in the chamber, citizens' comment, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have a quick comment about two things. First of all, the poor state of our rules, you've just seen play out yet again. We should have dialogue with citizens like they do in every other public forum in the state and in the nation, and we don't. That's a result of our poorly constructed and interpreted rules. Secondly, if you do have a problem that you bring to us, that is not in our jurisdiction, like the city traffic problem that we heard about, you do have relief on the horizon. There's a city election next month, and if you want to change the way that the city doesn't respond to your traffic concerns, change the leadership of the city by voting for new leadership. Both the mayor and the city council are all up in one month's time. So, that's probably the best advice for someone seeking relief for a city traffic problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me note for the public, just so you know, ma'am, and anybody here, citizens' comments the board cannot respond to because by public meeting law, if we get into dialogue, it's not listed on the agenda. So, that's why we have the limitation on that. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. Seeing all the citizens' comments. We'll go on to presentations and item A, and the COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccine plan update. Dr. Poor, I saw you on.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I am on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very well.
Okay. So, first of all, I want to talk just quickly about our data and our cases. Our seven-day rolling average as of yesterday is 15.7 new cases per 100,000. That has increased slightly from the week before. We have now tested 56% of Douglas County residents, and 12% of those have tested positive up to now, like 63,903 individuals. What we have seen last week, we have seen a slight increase of 39 cases, which is 6.6% over the previous week. We have also seen an increase in testing that occurred last week with an increase of When we look at our hospitalization, we are seeing a pretty similar picture. We have, as of yesterday, late, last night, 90 individuals that are in patients with COVID-19 in our area. Hospitals, 23% of, 23 of them are in the ICU, and 18 of them are on ventilators. That's kind of, as we have, reporting 664 deaths as a total today. I think the importance of this data is that we are, we have seen constant decreases over the last five weeks. Every week, I was able to report that, but what we are seeing now, we are, we are stuck and have potential leveling off or slight increases even. And it is important for us to remind us all that this is what we are seeing, and this goes a little bit in what I talk about next, and which is the variants. So, on Friday afternoon, we got reports from Nebraska Public Health Lab that we had the first case of B.117. That is the strain that had the variants that has been identified in the UK. That wasn't surprising because there were 45, 44 states until then who have identified the variant, and we were one of those few states that hadn't. But what it meant is immediately our staff, they needed to re-interview the person, try to identify what the contacts were of the individual. It was a young individual, as you have read in the paper, in its, in her twenties, it was a female. No travel, so that may identify that, you know, this is more prevalent in the community that we are proposing at this time. Just as a reminder, the B.117 variant that has been identified in UK potentially has a higher transmission rate. Potentially, it is one and a half times higher in transmitting the virus than what we have seen with the present virus that is in our community. But then on Saturday, we had another day where Nebraska, for the state, identified 13 new cases of the California variant, and nine of those cases were Douglas County residents. So, that meant, again, on Saturday, our staff went back then, interviewed these individuals one more time, and tried to identify if there were contacts within the last two weeks so that we could actually identify those contacts and have them tested to, for the variant specifically. We identified six contacts, and those samples are pending at Nebraska Public Health Lab. That sequencing usually does take a while, so those results are not, not coming back really quick. But what it has done, it has really increased our awareness of that we are still in the midst of this pandemic, that we have to be very conscientious of wearing our non-pharmaceutical interventions, like wearing masks, keeping social distancing, and most important, that it is so important now for us to get vaccinations out as quickly as possible to as many people as possible. So, I'm gonna go to the third component, which has to do with vaccination. So, for this week, we have been allotted 12,200 doses. That is higher than what we had last week. Let me just look if I have the data. So, that's a 14% increase over last week when we had 10,660 doses. From those 12,200 doses, 10% of them are, again, gonna go for educators. And I have some additional good news. The state was able to put in an order yesterday for the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, the third vaccine, who is now being approved over the weekend for emergency use authorization, and the state has put in an order for 15,000, and Douglas County is allotted 5,000 of those Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. That's a one-dose vaccine, has an efficacy of 100% against hospitalization and- and death. And that's really what we are mostly interested in. You may hear some of the percentages of effectiveness that have been thrown around. I would caution everybody, you cannot compare one vaccine to the other. Those trials were conducted at different timeframes. As a matter of fact, what is really encouraging, the Johnson and Johnson trial, was also including individuals from South Africa and from Brazil, when the variant was already widely distributed in those areas. So what we can say is that that vaccine is also effective against the variants. So I, I would caution you not to compare vaccine to vaccine. All of these three vaccines are effective vaccines, are hundred percent effective against hospitalization and death. Whatever you are, you can get, that's the vaccine you should, you should be able to get. But the good news is that these five thousand doses of Johnson and Johnson, we actually have some flexibility to vaccinate also our critical infrastructure. And the first thing we did is we went back to our superintendents to really try to see if they would be interested in Johnson and Johnson for their educators. And they said yes. So the plan is that on Saturday, we will have two separate clinics. We'll have a clinic at Millet North High, and we'll have a mass vaccination clinic at North, North Omaha High School. And those will be just for those five thousand doses of educators. They will only have to be injected once, and they are fully immunized after fourteen days after that shot. So this is, this is a good, a good day for us, and is really, I'm, I'm very happy to go along that line. In regards to overall, we have on our dashboard, you can see, and I don't have the new information yet, it's usually coming out by ten o'clock, but we have one hundred and twenty thousand and five hundred residents who have been vaccinated in Douglas County, and seventy, ninety-five thousand one hundred and nineteen with the first dose. And, well, let me just make sure I'm saying this correctly. Seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine with one dose, forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one with two doses. So nine point seven five percent of our residents are fully vaccinated at this time. If you look at recent ethnicity, that, I'm, I'm going only with the second dose, fully vaccinated, five point nine percent African Americans, seventy-eight percent white, five point one percent Hispanic, one point four percent Asian. We're doing a lot of outreach in North Omaha and in South Omaha, together with Charles True and One World, especially One World is able to now order directly from the federal government. And so we have a little bit more vaccine coming into the community from those community health centers. And what they are going to do is they are also helping with the critical infrastructure. So, for example, Charles True is starting to vaccinate daycare provider of those that are licensed daycares that are also in tier one B. And One World is starting to look at making connection with the meatpacking processing plants in South Omaha. So that will move forward. So that's kind of where we are right now. I think moving forward quickly, vaccinating as many as we can, I looked this morning, there are still some appointments. We have opened up more appointments this week because we have more total doses, and we'll do that as we move along. So for those sixty-five and above who are interested and are not vaccinated and don't have an appointment yet, it is really beneficial for them to go on the douglascountyhealth.com website and see where appointments are still available. We move forward. If we see that our appointments are open, we then move into critical infrastructure, and we potentially are changing ninety to ten to, to immunize or vaccinate more of the educators. So, you know, it's a process that we are going through, but I, I'm very happy how it, how it's moving forward. Any questions that I can answer?
We'll start in the chamber. Any questions from Commissioners in the chamber? Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Dr. Poor, thank you for that information, and you've helped me through a couple of items. One of them, and I think you may remember, but you may not, because I'm sure it's crazy. I've had a couple of constituents actually ask me, they're, they're taking care of elderly parents. And I think you may remember that, that we discussed this a little bit, but are there, can you give a general understanding of what the state and the county is, is doing as far as timeframes to prioritize maybe people of that nature or people that are around, you know, eighty and eighty-two, eighty-five-year-old people on a consistent basis, right? I, I was just curious. I mean, are we talking late March? If we had to guess, are we talking April? Or is that too tough to gauge?
Yeah, it, it really depends how the flow of vaccine is in our, is into our community. You know, if, if, if we could imagine that we get the same doses for about a two or three-week period, we could do some planning, and I could say, well, we potentially are that. I think at this time, I tell you, Commissioner, from week to week, I cannot even say, are we going to get again Johnson and Johnson next week, or are we not? And to stand up clinics, people are not understanding the logistics of this. It's really, and I, so I cannot really answer your questions in regards to those who are taking care of the elderly. I would just say, stay tuned, and as soon, as soon as the age range, as soon as we can go below sixty-five and older, but remember, we need to really work on the critical infrastructure first before we can go to that lower age group. So that's what I would say. And we still have two large groups that are the meatpacking plants and our grocery, individuals who work in grocery stores that really need to be vaccinated before we go to sixty-five and below.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
I think you partially answered my question. I was just wondering what large groups of people would need to be vaccinated before you start to do it by age. And I think you also made a good point last week during your report that, that we could get caught down a rabbit hole just trying to figure out which individuals need to be vaccinated by saying, you know, caregivers and all that who are not medical professionals per se. But what it comes right down to is that age is the biggest risk factor for, for that. So as long as those elderly folks are actually vaccinated, that's where the protection happens.
Thank you for that comment. And the comment is so important because what we are seeing when we get reports from long-term care facilities, we are seeing much less outbreaks. We are seeing yesterday, I think, less than twenty people in long-term care facilities who are positive for COVID-19. I mean, think about that. That's really protecting those that are the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this, Doctor. And I'm glad to hear that our, our vaccine supply is steadily rising. I, I think that's great news. Just one quick math question. I, I was writing this down when you were talking about the hundred and twenty thousand five hundred Douglas County residents who have received the vaccine. When you break that out into the first dose, second dose categories, but on the first dose category, I originally heard you say, I think, ninety-five thousand one hundred and nineteen, and the second dose, forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one, which doesn't add up to a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred. Is there, am I missing a number on that first dose? I think you corrected it. I didn't get it. What is it?
And so, Commissioner, when we look at how many vaccines have we administered in Douglas County, that number is a hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six.
Okay. So that makes sense. Okay. So the ninety-five thousand one nineteen is a correct first dose number, and forty-one thousand six thirty-one is a correct second dose number, right?
Correct. But, no, no. Okay. But when you are, so a hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six is total administered in Douglas County. Then when you go to the next tab and say, okay, of those, how many are Douglas County residents? Then you get to the number, hundred and twenty thousand five hundred doses were administered only to Douglas County residents, and of those, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine are first doses, forty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-one are second doses. So that tells you that, actually, you know, twenty-seven, it tells you how many individuals from outside the community we are vaccinating in Douglas County. And I just got the printout of them. It's actually very, very interesting. We are vaccinating eighteen thousand six hundred and ninety-three individuals from Sarpy County. And, you know, so we had that discussion last time, how can it be so many? Well, that's what, what you are seeing. We are, you are seeing it from all these different counties.
So these Sarpy County residents who come here to be vaccinated, are they critical infrastructure individuals in, in the Douglas County community? Is that who we're talking about?
That's what we are talking about, yes. They are critical infrastructure within Douglas County. And you know, that makes sense. A lot of people live across in that.
Sure. And as far as the critical infrastructure population goes, do we have a breakout of that? You don't have to give it to me now, but I was just wondering if I could get it.
You know, unfortunately, we don't have a breakdown of it because when people register, they are not, not being asked for occupation.
Okay. So how do we know when they show up that they're critical infrastructure?
You know, we do, because the links to critical infrastructure goes only to them. It's not on our general vaccine appointment list. So that's how we know. They usually also have to show an identification.
One other question, and this has to go to your demographic breakout, where you get the percentages on African Americans, European Americans, Hispanic Americans, Asian Americans. There is, or is not a breakout for Native Americans? Do we have a percentage?
Yeah, one minute, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes, there is, Commissioner, and it's point four percent.
Very good. Thank you, Doctor.
Any other Commissioners on Zoom? Seen none. Seen none in the chamber. Dr. Poor, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. We go on to item B, which is the public discussion of the assessors' plans. Commissioner Boyle, if you want to explain.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The County Assessor is responsible for assessing all of the public property, residential and commercial inside of Douglas County, and that applies, of course, across the state. And there are some minimums, and I, I'll try to cite them. I believe it's, she's supposed to come up with evaluations for the entire county when she presents this to the State of Nebraska, around ninety-four percent, something in that neighborhood. And one of the things that I think befuddles people is their, their valuation comes in, and they, they see it, and sometimes it doesn't look like it's something that is fair, that their neighbors have valuations, maybe that they're static, or else they've gone down, or maybe they've gone up only a little, and theirs has gone up substantially. And so it's really very relative. You have to look to see, have you been getting away with, you know, has your property not been valued over the years? That's a, that's probably not happened. It's been valued pretty frequently. In some cases, it's faster than others. In some cases, I saw, I used to live over near the University of Nebraska at Omaha, and I looked in a neighborhood over there with some homes that I'm familiar with, and one of them had a substantial drop in the valuation. And the thing that's mystifying to me, and I think it would be helpful to answer, is why the valuation on the lots? Why the lot, why are the lots so high? I also had a call from someone, the inconsistencies are bothersome. Had a call from someone who lives in Commissioner Rogers' neighborhood, where a lot that is hilly, that was valued at ten thousand dollars, is now sixty-three thousand dollars, and it's just simply over the moon. That just, it can't be. So one of the things that I did, and I did ask the assessor, she was here this morning, I invited her, she said she didn't get the email, but this morning I invited her to come and, and talk to us and talk to the community about what the plans are. Because we keep hearing that, you know, real estate is, is really, really, it's a great seller's market. And that's probably true, and particularly in certain ranges. And, you know, the homes that are in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. But the difficulty is that those homes where people are staying, they're going up too, and maybe they should because they're more valuable, but it has a, it has a tendency to push people out of their homes when that happens. So somehow there needs to be a balance, because the percentage that the assessor gives to the State of Nebraska is the overall valuation. It doesn't mean every house has to be at ninety-some percent valuation. That's my understanding. One of the things that I've asked for repeatedly and never able to get is a, kind of a model. What is the, what is the norm for a two-bedroom, two-bath home with a garage with a finished basement? What, what is the, what is the per, per, per square foot valuation for that home in, say, South Omaha? What's the valuation for a similar home in Elkhorn? And take a look at it and see if, how you stack up against those models. But the models have never been forthcoming. So it's very difficult for us when, and it's very difficult for the taxpayers, because of COVID, it's made it even more difficult to file a complaint and to get a timely answer. You, you can get an answer, I shouldn't have said timely, but to get an answer. And lots of times, people will file these elaborate complaints and, and have done a lot of work in comparing neighborhoods and styles of homes, and they're very careful. They compare their homes to the same styles and so forth in different neighborhoods and get no relief. And so they come to us. And so every year, the County Board, the Board of Equalization, will get thousands of, of complaints, I guess is the best way to put it. Many of them are valid, most, in my view, most of them are. And so the difficulty is that we're in a time crunch. Last year, we ended up with several hundred that we could not, we ran out of time, the, the homes were not assessed by our, our own people that go out and, and look at them to see what they think. And so I made the motion that we hold the valuations from the previous year and not increase it. And those valuations were left that way. Now, I don't know what's happening to those, those people. I'll have to look into it. But the problem is, we have a terrible overload. We get, last year, I think we got five thousand five hundred, which isn't the highest amount. But it's very difficult to really pay attention and give those the attention that they need. So what I'm doing is, I'm going to be, I've asked Catherine Hall, who works in our office, oh, I've got the red light, I'll be real quick, to get as much information as possible to the taxpayers. So, and I'm available too. You can call the courthouse, and they'll transfer it to my cell phone, and so I'll try to help as much as I can. And the number there is four four, four oh two, four four four, seven zero two five. And we'll get this information somehow better in the public. We have a competent office to do that. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other comments in the chamber? Comments on Zoom from board members? Seen none. Comments in the audience?
Diane, I'm so glad you stayed. Thank you.
So Diane, before you go, note the, the light's going to come on, and it'll tell you, it's going to go.
Oh, right here, it's just down in Lincoln.
Yep, it's going to go yellow at, when you got one minute.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot to say. Diane Badiato, Assessor, Register of Deeds, have a little frog in my. Um, I have a little frog in my throat, so I apologize. But the only thing I, that I am going to bring to the attention to the board and to the public is each year we put out a state-of-the-market report that we provide to our county board members and the, and the, uh, media that gives a picture of the previous year's market trends, uh, of sales and market conditions in our community. And those sales and market trends is exactly what drives values. We do not drive values. The market drives values. What willing buyers and willing sellers decide upon and agree upon. And for the last several years, we have been in a very increasingly vibrant market. Every July, we, we submit to the county board, whether they read it or not, can't do anything about that, we provide a three-year plan of assessment. And in that plan of assessment, it breaks down what our goals are and what we plan on doing, uh, for the three-year situation. Uh, this year, this last July was no different. What we reference in all of our data is that it is a vibrant market. And as long as it's a vibrant market, our job is to value accordingly. One of the things we've had presented to us when we, when we reached out to each commissioner, uh, to come and visit us, four of the commissioners greatly did. They had a full one-hour meeting. We went through, our presentation has a lot of data. It has some hugely amounts of detail, which has to be talked about, has to be explained. Sorry, Commissioner Friend, that you can't see me behind the screen.
I knew you were there.
You knew I was there. Um, but anyway, which is why we don't do this in public forum. Now, if the county board decides that they want to give me forty-five minutes to an hour to specifically go through page by page, attended, no, uh, comments basically to listen, we would be able to do that. That is not the case in public forum unless you want to go till two o'clock and overlap the city council. That's why we invite the county board. That's why we have preliminary opportunity, preliminary value meetings every year between January fifteenth and the end of February. We embrace and invite those who review their preliminary values on our website to come and talk to us, to present to us their reasons if they feel their values are not what they feel they should be. We invite that. That is the only way that we can grasp correct information because we very, very rarely get into homes. Commissioner Boyle referenced that during the BOE process in June, that they didn't get allowed time for their hire, their referees to go out. Their referees do not go out.
No.
Their ref, well, that's, but that's what you said.
Oh, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean that.
So we very rarely get inside a property. We take this six weeks at the beginning of every year to invite the public who don't feel like their value is appropriate or would like to know the reason why we value like we did. Because they are bringing us data that we might not have available in our records. Our values can only be as accurate as the information we have in our database. We work very diff, very, very discreetly, very thoroughly. Uh, Brian, Brian Gribb, my chief field deputy, has done an awesome and efficient job for going on seven years with the expert staff I have in the appraisal office, in the assessor side of the, of the building. So by having as much information as we can in July, in January, and, um, February, uh, we have an, we have not only can review that specific property, we can also review the neighborhood that that, that property lies in for possibly some neighborhood attributes that we are not aware of. So, um, we, we continue to invite conversation. March first, yesterday was the last day for preliminary meetings. If you did speak with ours, we had virtual, we had phone, we had email, we had mail-in, and we had drop-off in our lobby. We had a variety of ways that property owners could get to us and get the nation, information to us and get information back. We will submit that to the state, our preliminary findings after our reviews. And come mid-May, the state of Nebraska will give us our report card. Through the last going on seven years, we've had six out of the seven years that we have had exemplary scoring from the state of Nebraska. That tells me, and it should tell the board, that we are doing, taking every step possible to follow the market, to follow the statutes, and to follow the values accordingly.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I'll get back to you, Commissioner Boyle. Maureen, Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Thanks, Diane, for coming to make those comments too. And, and first and foremost, I was one of those commissioners that did listen to your presentation.
And thank you.
And I found it actually, uh, very professional, very thorough. I think your office does, does really show the data when it's there. And to be honest, I'd be one of those that wouldn't mind you coming down to do a forty-five-minute uninterrupted presentation. I think it'd be very valuable for the citizens to hear it. Um, I think mostly because I feel that the, the biggest complaint we hear from, from property owners and as property owners is just that sometimes we're surprised by the bills, surprised by the amount of increase that our property was, was valued at. And so it's more than anything, it's, it's, it's the surprise and the shock that all of a sudden you're paying that much more in taxes. So I think really the bottom line is, we just have to figure out a way to keep that surprise from happening. And so I'm not criticizing the, the office per se. It's mostly if this really is dependent on property valuation, um, and someone's, we don't know how that property, when someone's been living there for ten years, you know, their, their valuation increased by fifty thousand when their neighbors went down by ten thousand, when nobody on the block sold their house, you know? So, so, so I think those types of things need to be explained, and that's what your presentation did for me. Now, it explained it, but at the same time, people are still feeling the hit from a big, uh, property, uh, valuation increase. And so, so I think the bottom line is there, there, we should probably try to problem solve another way, working with the state because this is by state, state statute, uh, on, on how to determine what taxes really are. Because currently they're saying, as you pointed out to me, it's that ninety to ninety-five percent, so, of property value. So, so those are the types of things I think we have to, to, to try to, try to work out.
Can I respond? Uh, thank you for those. And it was very nice to see you, especially as a new commissioner, reaching out and wanting to gain more information. Um, I'm going to address a couple situ, a couple of things that you said. Uh, first of all, our mandated per statute ratio for the me, the median value across the county is between ninety-two and a hundred percent of market value. Uh, most counties strive for that mid-range between ninety-five, ninety-six. We've been at ninety-five the last couple of years. We have, this is, we have had increasing sales and values for quite a few years. The increase started about in two thousand twelve after the recession. It has not stopped since. So following the, the statutes, following the values, following the sales, anyone who has sold a house or pu, or purchased a home in the last couple of years know what the market is indicating. That is based on supply and demand. I've been in real estate for thirty-five years. Supply and demand has always been the precursor to whatever happens in the market. So with that being said, as long as the supply is low and the demand is high, those value, those sales prices are going to continue to increase, especially in the three hundred and lower, uh, income, uh, about, uh, property ranges. Secondly, I understand, I'm a property owner, I pay taxes. And yes, the, the shock regarding my office from a property owner is only for the value. Now, we follow the market trends and the sales and values are going to go up. And it's not house by house, and it's not block by block. Maureen, you, you mentioned, you know, on my block. It's not just your block. We, we, have we noticed, we have nineteen sales market areas in our county that are surround, that are based on the high school districts, the high schools in the, in the county. That is the market area. It's not just a one-block area. Your neighborhood is not just a one-block area. So we have to encompass all those sales in the market area, which is why you may be different from your neighbor next door. Based on those values, if those values are going to continue to go up, that's one thing. If the political subdivisions, such as the county board, the city, the schools, the fire, and everything that's sub, that is, is embarked on setting a tax levy, if they do not adjust those based on the increased values, more property owners are gonna have sticker shock. The political subdivisions are the only way in a rising market that the, uh, payment from a property owner can be levelized. So I refuse, after all these years, to take the hit for rising property taxes because we're doing our job for the property values that have to be done by state statute because of rising sales. So it's a two-way street and it's, you know, if, if, if one's doing their job on one end, the other needs to do their job on the other end in order to not have the sticker shock.
I understand. Right. Thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Boyle, Diane, I'm gonna just say, I'm, I'm fair to take responsibility with where it is. But I'm not just gonna say it to you. I'm saying it to all the electants. You know, I just don't like the back-and-forth game because the fact is, for all the electants, when you come to us for money and these adjustments come, then, you know, uh, the cost of your requests go up, the cost of your staff go up. So it's not as clean as assessment goes up. We put it down. There's other things that play in, so I just want that on the record. Commissioner Boyle.
Can I make a comment to you, Chris, first? To based on your comment, like I did.
Real quick. Because I wasn't saying it to you. I'm saying it.
I know, I know.
Uh, real quick, and then I'll go to.
Okay, real quick. Um, I totally understand that. As far as my budget goes, our salaries are based on the union contracts and pay, pay step increases. So the majority of the changes in those salaries are not based by what my, I want. It's based by what the unions, contracts have, have, uh, have con, have agreed upon. And, uh, secondly, I wasn't saying that arbitrarily tax rates goes down. I'm just stating the fact that that's the levelizing factor.
I agree. That's why I tried to separate it from the person.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Ms. Badiato, I want to thank you very much, first of all, for stepping up. This is really, uh, beyond what I expected. I, I truly appreciate it. And I think there's, uh, you know, um, I guess I'd like to say, and I know, I think you agree with this, that more information is better. And if there's some way, I certainly would, uh, agree with, uh, uh, Dr. Boyle, that the, uh, you're welcome, as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm not the one who can't extend an invitation. The chair would do that. But I would love to see you come down and make a presentation and, uh, tell us as much as possible you can about how you arrived at, uh, generally about the decisions that are, that are being made in your office. And, uh, I do want to say too, take the opportunity, that Mike Goodwilly comes down every week and does a terrific job, uh, be representing the taxpayers and your office. And I want to say that publicly, that I appreciate it. And we do spar, but it's fun to spar with him, but he always wins. That's the trouble. No, anyway.
Mike, I don't know if he wins when I spar with him.
And I do want to say to you too, that, uh, something that the public may not know, but it's something that you and I know. And that is that we have, uh, and I, I will accept the responsibility, that our relationship has, uh, uh, gone downhill, and it, I'll take the responsibility for that. Uh, and, uh, we don't, we don't get along real well, and I do take the responsibility for that. And I apologize to you for, uh, some of the relation, the relationship that has deteriorated. And I hope that we can make it much better because you are, uh, I have always been a strong supporter of you personally as a public official. And, uh, somehow we got off the track, and I take, again, take responsibility for that. So I want to get it on track and welcome you here and make it clear that we are partners. We disagree. We're adversarial by nature because you make a, a valuation and we are asked to reduce it. So it's adversarial sort of in nature, but we don't have to be enemies. And so I apologize to you for the, uh, problems I've caused.
And I thank you for that. Um, I've been, first elected in office in two thousand four as the Register of Deeds. And I feel that some of our professional and personal differences stem from the fact when the offices were first merged back in two thousand twelve, and I became the assessor and the register of deeds. Uh, I'm doing my job, you're doing yours, and we should probably not mix, uh, personal and business.
And there's one thing that I've always disliked, and that is when someone says, if I've offended you, I apologize. There's no if in this. I've offended you and I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just make note that if we, um, hold on PJ, we got one more here in the chamber, and I'll get to you. If, um, just to Commissioner Boyle's point, I'll have that discussion with the chair. And if she wants to, we'll see about doing that, trying to work your suggestion out, uh, Madam Assessor.
If I could, if I could, Chris, uh, say that, um, possibly this time of year might be a moot point because I would rather do it in full force at the beginning of next year when, before preliminaries, and we have a new state of the market with a new, and, and that way we'd be starting fresh. People would have six weeks then to, to, you know, to act upon what the presentation is.
Noted. Thank you. Noted. Um, Commissioner Friend, and then I'll come to you, PJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Diane, thanks, thanks again for the information. I, I echo, um, some, if not all, of Mike's. Although I don't know if I've offended you yet, but I, but I'm sure, give me some time. I, uh, I was pleased with the presentation as well. What, what I wanted to say was, um, and you know this because I shared this with you and your team. The difficulty comes when, you know, I've been here, whatever, two or three months, I can't remember now. We're the front line. What, what, what a lot of these constituents will do is they'll actually flag us down. They'll email us, they'll call us, they'll do whatever, and they'll say, what's the answer? Well, what I, what I was happy with is that you did provide me a, a process or information, and I, I can't speak for the, the rest of us, but just for myself, a process that I can actually get that information in front of you in an effective way. And I did get information back in a really timely fashion. Now, I don't think the constituents necessarily liked, uh, you know, all of the information that I relayed back to them. But the process is in place, and at least if the dialogue continues, then there's some value to that. So I appreciate it. Finally, I did mention this to you, and I think we could maybe all agree on this. You're, you and your team have, other than, uh, the jobs like law enforcement and frontline, you know, medical personnel and everything else, it's gotta be the toughest job in town. It has to be. Because these items are not gonna go away. They're gonna continue. I have a feeling for the next four years that I'm here, they're gonna continue piling into my box, in my inbox. So I just want to let you know, I, I look forward to the, uh, I look forward to the continued dialogue. And if I have problems and, and, and issues, you'll know about them. So, thanks, thanks for the help.
You're very welcome. And I do appreciate that comment, Commissioner Friend. Uh, one of the things that I live my life on is communication can be a huge solution resolved. What we've asked repeatedly from the county board members, because you are the front lines to your constituents within your district. So when your constituents do reach out to you with issues about, for, for my slant, property values, and I'm sure we're not the only thing that they reach out to you about. But I very much appreciate upon our suggestion is for you to, you know, respond to that property owner, that thank you, but pass it on to us because my appraisers are the experts. So they can actually research whatever question you might have to properly answer back to you and to that owner, what, what, what we found through the research or whatever documentation that that person has asked about. It just makes a cleaner answer, you know, rather than not reaching out to us. And some commissioners have sometimes tried to answer it on their own. But don't ever hesitate to reach out to us because that's our job, is dealing, you know, dealing with public issues and those coming through your, your, uh, your emails. So we do not have a problem with that. We invite that problem, you know, if you perceive it to be a problem. But there, again, we find it a way, as sometimes, we have over two hundred and twenty-four thousand parcels in Douglas County. So there is no way that some are not going to, to be up to snuff. I mean, there's just no human way that they can all be completely as accurate and full of the data that they need to be. So please continue to do so. Um, though I, as I do, want to say, one of the, uh, questions that you had on one of your property owners that emailed you, they said they had talked, they had, they did come in for preliminary meetings. And then they looked at their preliminary value, and it was up, you know, exponential, I don't know how much. But during our preliminary meetings, that's our data gathering and our conversation with the property owner. We will not know at that point in time. They will not get an adjustment. We will not be able to tell them. Because what we will take is the information that we've got, not only through their documentation, but just through collaborative verbal conversation. We take that, my appraiser for that area, will take that information for their property, and they'll expand it to the neighborhood and then come to a possible adjustment that will then be sent to the state. And then the, uh, property owner by June first will get a valuation change notice sent in the mail to them. So at the point of preliminary, they won't know if or not it's going to be adjusted. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
It's so hard to tell with these masks. People are, if people are looking, is you like, you're crazy or what?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Morgan.
Diane, thank you, uh, for your comments. And I do agree with, uh, Maureen Boyle as far as, uh, the presentation. And I think, uh, the only thing I was gonna say to that, and you've said it, at this time of the year, it'd be difficult to do that. But I think next year, we should. it, at this time of the year, it'd be difficult to do that, but I think next year, we should make sure we have a meeting with a shorter agenda, make room for that 45 minutes to an hour, that you'd present that without questions. At least everyone could watch that and promote it in a positive way with Lea, our personally, and have that. The other thing I'd say about that supply and demand, we're seeing the number of listings in maybe the state, but for sure Douglas County, at about 20% of the normal, in norm. And what you said, the supply and demand is what's happening, and it's like any other commodity. If there isn't the supply, they can raise the price almost whatever they want. I know Grape-Nuts cereal now, instead of for a few dollars a box, is going for 15 or 20 dollars on the internet with my dad's favorite.
I'm glad I don't buy Grape-Nuts.
So we do see that this market is extremely hot right now, especially for residential, and what you said about 300,000. If there were more properties available, it wouldn't be at those kind of values. So I thank you again for that, and I think next year, we should definitely plan on having that presentation for the citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Diane. Thank you. If you keep it to a minute, because you're done out of time, Commissioner Boyle. Okay.
I want to take the mask off, so you can see I'm being sincere. I really appreciate your coming down. You made, excuse me, you made my day, and you made it for a lot of taxpayers who heard your presentation. I look forward to a much better relationship, and also, because we do work for the same people. And so we'll do that, and I promise to do my part, and I know you will.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Diane, for coming down today. I appreciate it very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. We'll go on to item six, and letter A, and note, the people that are here for the Papio River, I'm coming there next, so I can get you out of here. So bear with me for five minutes on this. Item 7A is the open to public comment, the public hearing on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, for the vacation of North 150th Avenue, south of Sandy Pepper Street, within the Heritage Edition, with action to be taken on March 9. This is the public hearing. We will officially now open the public hearing. Mr. Kula.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you today, we're having a public hearing on the vacating of 150th Avenue, south of Sandpiper Drive, which is in the Heritage Edition. And I have some overhead projections to kind of show you where we're talking about. This is the city of Bennington, 156th Street, Highway 36, and then this red circle is the Heritage Edition. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, so you can kind of see what we're talking about. The road we're talking about vacating is right in here.
Can you speak into the microphone, Dan? Thank you.
Yeah. This is the road that we're considering to be vacated. It is within the Heritage Edition, and we were advised of a plat to form Heritage Replat 5, would take over from this portion of the heritage. Now, this road is existing only on paper. It's not a existing road, so it's never been built upon. Obviously, no houses have been built adjacent to it. By statute, it is required to petition the county board to vacate a road, which was done on November 30th, 2020. The Douglas County Clerk was petitioned to consider the vacation of this road. This black line indicates the zoning jurisdiction of Bennington, so this lies within the zoning jurisdiction of Bennington. By law, they have to approve the vacating or make recommendations to vacate a road in order to proceed to the county board. So on December 15th, 2020, Douglas County Board asked us to, directed us to study this vacation request. City of Bennington's Council, on October 12th, voted to recommend vacating it, and along with that vacating, recommended that the Replat 5 of Heritage be allowed. This would allow that to proceed. So they put that in their resolution. We asked the board to schedule a public meeting, and that's where we are today. So it was our recommendation, after studying all this, following all the statutes, checking all the petitions, signatures, making sure they're valid. Let me show you who owns what and adjoining property owner. This is all owned by the developer. The red portion is the vacating request. These large parcels of farmland are all wine prairie and are owned by the border regions of Nebraska. They both signed the petition, so they're all in favor of this request. So having studied all this, you know, we, the county engineer, have no problems with vacating of this road to allow them to go forward, and we are recommending that this be approved by the county board. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from Commissioners in the chamber? You got a question, Mike? Come on. No, this is it.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Did I miss something here, sir? What, can you revisit the purposes of the vacation?
Well, the purpose of the vacating is the developer is considering to replat it. I don't know if you can see this small, it's gonna be called the Heritage Replat 5.
Okay.
This road we're talking about is right here, and he wants to vacate that road, or they want to vacate that road, so they can replat it into some other use.
And that's my point. Right now, we don't know. I mean, it could be commercial. I mean, we haven't achieved any of that thought yet.
No, I don't believe it could be commercial, but the developer obviously owns the property and must have something else in mind, but they haven't divulged that to me, what that would be.
All right, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from Commissioners on Zoom? Any questions in the chamber? Again, any questions in the chamber? With that, we will close the public hearing, and the item will be up for vote next week, right?
That is correct.
All righty. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it.
Your bet.
We're gonna go now to item, we're gonna go to community services, and we'll knock out item one, so that should be quick, and then we'll go to item two. Item one on the community services is reallocation of the 2021 Business Improvement Fund grant for the American Midwest Ballet. Is there a motion to approve item one? Motion approved by Commissioner Maureen Boyle.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mike Boyle. Seeing no questions, please vote in the chamber and roll call on Zoom.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Oh, geez. Sorry.
That's okay. Motion passes. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Morgan, and Borgeson voting yes virtually.
Item two is the resolution opposing the Papio Missouri River NRD's proposed construction of Dam Site 10 in Douglas County and Washington County. Before we start, just for the public, we will, our actual motion to approve or disapprove from the Commissioners, I'll let the Commissioners comment, and then I will come to you all for your comment. As you've noticed, the clock will give you timing. It's five minutes. At yellow, it'll be one minute. So is there a motion to approve from Commissioners?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Mike Boyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mike Friend. Commissioner Friend or Boyle, it's on you if you want to comment, whichever one.
Michael?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, just like Commissioner Mike Boyle, I've been seeing this type of stuff and information that's presented to us for an awful long time now. The weird thing about it, it's not really weird, the thing about it is, it's, we're really talking about eminent domain. And the NRD and the Corps of, the Army Corps of Engineers, years ago, probably approximately, maybe the early 60s, 1964 or so, started making determinations and started utilizing eminent domain, at least the Corps did, to a certain degree, to try to provide flood control in Douglas County and in the city of Omaha. And some of that was necessary for a variety of reasons. Anyway, fast forward, just so everybody understands, and it's not really necessarily an education or a lecture, but eminent domain, I've had huge issues with for almost my whole life that I've actually understood it. And the NRD has that statutory authority. They have that capability. So does the Corps of Engineers. But eminent domain is problematic, because governments essentially acquire private property, and they usually acquire it from unwilling sellers, and then they have it for public use, correct? So in many cases, though, the public use has been twisted out of recognition, or it's contested with. And that's where Commissioner Boyle and I were actually talking about this on a variety of occasions. And I might let him opine on this as well, but I'm trying to give you some context. So the issue that I have is eminent domain doesn't, eminent domain inherently, let's just say that all of these dam sites in the city of Omaha were necessary. Let's say for a second that that's the case, for flood control. If that were the case, it still doesn't, eminent domain still doesn't take into the matter or take into consideration subjective value. So let's assume that I had a baseball cap that I got married in, right, and I love it, and my wife loves it too. Well, I bought it way back when for 10 bucks, and now somebody today wants to offer me $5 for it. The subjective value of that hat is I got married in it. I love it. And it's worth, who knows what to me. I can't even put a price on it. But when somebody on eBay says, "I'll give you $5 for that old garbage hat," I'm offended. Fast forward even further, they say, "No, no, no, you gotta take that price. You gotta take that $5 for that hat. We don't care what your wife thinks. We don't care what you think." Do you see the inherent problem here? Now, most of the people in this room probably do. The issue that I have is that the Corps of Engineers federally and the NRD have authority to do this. So you're asking us, what type of authority do we have to actually tell them that they can't? My contention is, I can tell every constituent that I have, and anybody that actually is listening, that I hate this idea. And I think that we're gonna hear a little bit of testimony that probably backs that thought process up. So there is value to what the NRD does. I've been down to Flanagan Lake. I love it. The problem, the problem is they had to take somebody's land in order to do it. I don't even know the backstory to that. Enough of my, I told some administrator this morning I was gonna blubiate a little about this, and I told her I was not gonna be brief. I don't think I have been, but I have huge issues with a lot of the things that relate to eminent domain in this county. We had massive flooding about two years ago. Most of it was west of the Elkhorn River, when everything up north, just south of Oahu and in Niobrara, just blew up. I don't remember having any flooding on this side of the Elkhorn River. So you see where I'm going with this? I'd like Commissioner Boyle's thoughts, if he has any, on this. I just think we should pass a resolution like this, because I think it's, I think it doesn't really do anything except fire a shot across the NRD's bow to say that we're actually watching. And so, again, I like some of the work that they do, but I'm really concerned. And I think that we're gonna hear a little bit more concern as we move on here. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Mike. I'm Commissioner Friend. I'm very concerned and have been for quite a few years about the procedures of the NRD. And I have good friends who serve on it. They're, you know, good people and all the rest of it, but I've always, I've really held that the development that's being done to create these dams is really for recreation and for, you know, development of homes around the water. And I'm not opposed to that, but I don't think this is the way to do it, to be taking property. The line about, what's being said about this particular dam site is that if we don't, this is them talking, "If we don't do this, Exarben will flood." And I'm just kind of like, really? You know, I think, I think the chances that if you do it are probably greater, because, you know, I was on the internet just now while Commissioner Friend was talking, I was looking up the figures, and I don't want to say them unless they're accurate, but I'll just offer this, that I'll stand to be corrected on this. But I remember reading, and I even bought a book about it, the flood of 2008 in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. My recollection is that 34 dams failed. 34 dams failed in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And it flooded the city to incredible, you can look it up on Google and get all the figures yourself. Please do. But downtown was underwater, everything was underwater. It was awful. It was just totally from hell. And the gas lines broke, and a fire started. I remember seeing this. I've got good friends, a fellow lawyer who lives in Cedar Rapids, and the downtown was on fire and was underwater. I mean, it was, it looked like Dante's Inferno. I thought, this is just, this is truly hell. Well, these dams failed, and when you think about it, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but when you think about it, a dam is holding water. And so if you get these downpours, it can't hold more water, so it goes over the top, and then it may break even. And just recently, they had a terrible rainstorm on the east coast, and in West Virginia, there was a dam, and the dam, of all things, was named Hurricane. It was Dam Hurricane. How's that for a dandy? But Hurricane Dam was breached. It failed, and it unloaded all these millions of gallons of water, cubic feet of water, onto a town of about 500. Now, that's the only one I read about. I haven't done a lot of exploration. And if I'm wrong about the number of dams in Cedar Rapids, someone, please, correct me. But in my estimation, as a non-engineer, dams are built, they have water in them, they have sandy beaches or whatever it is around them, and homes around them, and all the rest. That's great. But when the rains come, they fill it up and it goes over. I don't think you have to be an engineer to get that concept. So the other thing is that, to me, it's a fallacy that this is going to stop flooding. That's my point. Secondly, though, I agree wholeheartedly, from across the party, we're different parties and a lot of different philosophies, but eminent domain is a last resort, and it must be used for the benefit of the public. Now, that's how it's being presented, but I don't believe it is for the public benefit. Years ago, when we were looking at what was going on in Washington County on this subject, I was surprised, we had, we formed an organization called the Papio Valley something, and it was to support building of dams. And Douglas County was all wholeheartedly, we're all just right into the whole thing. And I noticed that Washington County voted no. And so I said to Claire Duda at the time, who's up close to Washington County, "What's the deal? Let's go up there and find out why they're opposed." We went up there, and we found out why, because they felt it was condemnation, taking it for a private, public, you know, a private use of selling the property. So we flipped and changed our position totally, and this board came out and withdrew from that organization and joined Washington County to try to fight this developing problem. So here we are today with no authority again. And we lobbied down in the legislature to try to get authority that if any dam is built, and any dam being built is subject to the county board's approval. Well, the NRD was smart, and they said, so long as that dam is covering two counties. Okay, well, this one is one county, so the law does not apply, and it probably never will. So anyway, this is a point, I didn't mean to talk this long, because I want to hear from the people who are directly affected. Hopefully, this can make some public impact somewhere, and so I welcome this, and I do support absolutely voting against this pri- And so I, I welcome this and I do support absolutely voting against this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I, I guess I've got a couple of questions. My information from members of the NRD who apparently weren't aware that we're going to have this on the agenda today is that this project is a couple of years out with no land being condemned or acquired at this point. So I, I guess my question would be to, to Commissioner Boyle, have we had any discussions with the elected representatives on the NRD regarding this?
I was looking through the chair for permission to speak, but I'll go ahead and speak.
You're using Commissioner Kavanaugh's time.
Okay, the answer is no. And the reason is that we don't have any authority to do this, Jim. This is simply an opportunity for people being affected to speak up. And I, so I didn't, didn't notify them because they just come down and tell us what they're going to do. And it would just take more time that isn't necessary because we know they have the authority to do it because they've got it in state law. They outboxed us. And so, you know, there's no point in having them come by. I mean, I respect their authority. They're going to do what they, they want to do. So there you have it.
Sure. And I understand that. I, I would just like to hear, you know, both sides of the, of the question from people who are most concerned with this, both from the property owners, I understand their concerns, and from the elected officials on the NRD. I understand that, you know, they've got a process that is apparently a couple of years out before this thing goes forward. So there's plenty of time for us to hear, you know, their rationale for it. And I, like you, have friends on the NRD that I would like to discuss this with. But they indicate to me right now that there's no immediacy for this. And we certainly have plenty of opportunity maybe to lay this over and get a, get an update from the NRD relative to where these are. I'm aware of these dam sites because the Cunningham, Zarenski, Standing Bear sites are all ones that I've, you know, used. And, and I think a lot of people in the community do. They have a good purpose, both for recreation and for flood control. So it would seem to me that it would be best practices to kind of get the rationale behind Dam Site 10. I'm not even sure where it's at. I haven't seen a map that shows where it's at. But it seems like that with a couple of years going forward, and my understanding is the Corps of Engineers is doing a survey now, that, you know, we could get some valuable information and decide then relative to this position. I, I, I can't vote on something that I don't have any information on, and that's kind of where, where we're at right now. So I don't know if it would be appropriate to maybe lay this over, invite the NRD to come and make a presentation to us. But it would seem to me that that would be the best way to go forward.
If I, if I could respond to that, Jim, I've recognized, and I, I think the, the people who are affected by this deep down in their hearts know that there is nothing we can do to overturn this. So it's a waste, a gargantuan waste of time to have the NRD come down and explain what it is. They can at some point, but this is something that needs to be discussed now. I don't want this laid over. And if you have to vote no, that's okay. Or abstain, that's okay. But you'll hear from the taxpayers and the people who are directly affected today, and that's what we need to get to. There are a number of people in the audience that shouldn't be turned away by a layover. So I appreciate your view, but I hope you'll just abstain or vote no, whichever you're comfortable with.
I, I appreciate that. I, and I'm looking forward to hearing from these folks. I don't know if there's anybody from the NRD here. Do we know that?
Probably not. But again, there's no point because they'll, they'll talk about how this is all to prevent floods and they'll have the Army Corps and they'll start talking, talking statistics and stuff, which they're welcome to do. But let me mention, this has been a, probably a 15-year battle. The public comment is very difficult with the NRD. And so this is an opportunity to allow the people who are really opposed to get their, get their say. That's what it amounts to. We'll hear from the NRD if, if they want to come. I certainly would welcome them, just like we did the assessor.
Thanks, Mike. I'll, I'll listen with interest to what folks have to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Hi, just a quick comment, and that is that when the dams are built, of course, they're trying to protect the land immediately around it. And apparently with this one, it's not necessarily, or seen as a necessity. And that the, the circumference around the area usually is about 10 miles. And here, they're trying to say that this will protect an area like out 70, 70 miles away. And that, I think that's, that's the issue. So the one piece of data we kind of have is that this dam really may not be necessary in the first place. I think that's, that's the point. So it's a, a development issue, not necessarily a Corps of Engineers issue, although they need the Corps of Engineers to make that determination that, that it would be a, a safe thing to do.
Thank you. Any other commissioners on Zoom right now? All righty. Anyone from the public?
It's not very clear, so I apologize. I blew it up out of the Corps of Engineers report. Sean Malots, S-H-A-W-N, M-E-L-O-T-Z. I reside at 10404 North 132nd Street in Omaha. First, I'd like to address Commissioner Kavanaugh's comments. Time is of the essence because the Corps of Engineers has their report that's a draft report at this time. They need to issue this draft report to Washington DC to obtain $80 million in federal funding for this project. And one other project by the NRD. So I feel it is very timely to bring this to you. I, I realize this was a quick agenda item. However, I, I think that as Commissioner Boyle has said, we've gone through this process for years. And it's not going to change. It's kind of an us versus them mentality. But to begin, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors, my family, and the Papio Valley Preservation Association. And I want to thank Commissioners Boyle and Friend for bringing this resolution. I respectfully come before this board to request passage of the recommended resolution opposing the Papio Missouri River NRD's proposed construction of Dam Site 10 in Douglas and Washington County. I've put a map up on the screen so that people are aware of where it is. This road is Highway 133. And the road that swings down to the bottom here is Highway 36. So it's in northwest Douglas County. The county line is right along this line. So it's a two-mile structure going north of Highway 36, and it does hop into Douglas County. This proposed dam will cause displacement of nine homeowners and will affect 40 different properties. Those property owners are listed on the right chart or the left chart within this map. And I want to first begin to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the Douglas County Board for sticking with us and supporting us through these years. I'm truly grateful for this. This, this plight for my generation has started since 2004. My parents have been involved in this since 1968. So this has been well over 50 years. My 90-year-old mother went to Washington DC to fight this back in the day. But she couldn't be here today. She's home milking our cows. So we had to leave her home to do the work. It was Commissioners Rogers, Borgeson, Mike Boyle, and former Commissioner Claire Duda that was instrumental in bringing the, to light the fact that dams are not needed in this area. Together with Washington County Board of Supervisors, this board developed a storm water management plan opposing the use of dams. Now we fast forward to today. The U.S. Corps of Engineers is performing a $3 million study on flood risk in the Papio Creek Basin. This is on behalf of the Papio NRD. The study's sole purpose is to obtain $80 million of federal funding to build two dams in the Omaha area, one being Dam Site 10. During this study, not only has the public process been flawed, it appears that the underlying data within the report has been crafted in order to achieve a predetermined result. The Papio NRD wants $80 million of federal funds to do this project. Regarding the flawed public process, affected landowners were never directly notified by either the Corps or the NRD regarding this study. They learned by word of mouth. And it's fortunate that our families have worked together and been in this valley for over hundreds of years. At the most recent public meeting held in January, I think it was the 10th, the public was not allowed to speak. We could only type our questions and concerns into a chat box. Plus, the meeting was shut down prematurely, literally without answering all the chat box questions and without live public comments. At the end of the meeting, we realized we could click the mute button and talk, and we requested a face-to-face public meeting with the Corps so that we could have some of our questions truly answered. And the representative said no. Regarding the underlying data, as I understand the report, the need for Dam Site 10 is based on a 70-square-mile storm event with 37.2 inches of rainfall over a 72-hour period. Ask yourselves, does this seem excessive? Again, this study, in our opinion, is, was designed to get $80 million of federal money. To conclude and allow time for others, thank you for considering passing this resolution opposing the building of Dam Site 10 in Washington and Douglas Counties. It will send a message. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else?
Thank you, Sean.
And I, I would like to leave the map up so that others that come up could possibly point out their areas that they're going to lose.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. Grant Malots, G-R-A-N-T-M-E-L-O-T-Z, 14024 Blair High Road, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, Douglas County Board. Thank you for putting this resolution up, and thank you very much for having a meeting in person. It's refreshing after the last so-called public meeting hosted by the Army Corps of Engineers and Papio NRD. It was a sham of a meeting and both entities should be embarrassed by it. Just in case you missed it, they gave us the opportunity to type in comments in a chat box, and then they would respond, say it's about 10 questions or type comments later with the answers that they wanted. Then the public could not ask the follow-up questions so that we could get on the same page. Then, one question left unanswered, which would affect the Douglas County Board, is road closures and road destruction around Dam Site 10 when they do fill the dam. For example, if you look here, there is a new bridge here and here. And by the map of it, the, it'll be higher than the bridge and higher than the roads. So when the, when they so-called fill the dry dam, are they going to reimburse the county for the cost? Or is the NRD going to have to pay the cost? Who, who is all responsible? Well, excuse me. Well, just to make you feel better, the Corps said they would answer the questions asked during the meeting in a general sense by grouping them together how they see fit. Quote, "This report is a rushed report with a predetermined outcome." Oh, and I almost forgot, they allocated 30 minutes for public comment. And then after an hour of it, they said, "Well, we've gone over our allowed a time, and we'll answer the questions later for something that is going to affect the landowners around Dam Site 10 for the rest of our lives." And then they just cut it off. So again, thank you for bringing this resolution before the board. And I ask for your vote in opposing the Papio NRD and the Army Corps building Dam Site 10.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Tyler Moore, T-Y-L-E-R, M-O-H-R. I live at 12101 Pawnee Road, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a dairy farmer. And first, you need, you need to kind of understand the area out there. We're, we consist a group of retired people. We have young families that are starting their families and a lot of old-time farmers. In fact, I think there's seven or eight parcels that are involved in this that have been in the same family for over 100 years. Now, I'd like to say that we are in no way against flood control at all. We, we built and rebuilt terraces and changed our farming practices over the years. A lot of them terraces, we cooperated with the NRD to build. During the course of this study, they had a, a different dam planned. And, and we asked them if they could consider other alternatives in order to keep from displacing. There's nine families going to be displaced and maybe more if you figure out they're going to lose their access and their wells and that sort of thing. And we asked them if they would look at other alternatives. Well, they weren't too cooperative. They said they're going to build a dry dam, which would suggest that would be a smaller footprint. But they raised the elevation of the dam level 18 foot, which made the, just an enormous project where they're taking, you know, quite a bit more land. And, and they haven't been really forthright with us on a lot of things. There's a 400, they talked earlier about how they were using a 70-square-mile area of rainfall. There's only about four miles of drainage, four square miles of drainage into this, maybe five. I'm just guessing from what I know. And, and, you know, they're way overestimating everything. I really have a problem with way the, the study was conducted. I mean, there was overwhelming opposition to this, but their written report excluded all the opposition. And, and it actually said that there was public support for dams. So, I mean, I want to thank you guys for all the support you give us over the years. And we support this resolution. We continue to support this board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And if you have any questions for me, or you can't do dialogue.
We can if there, you still, there's still time. Come on, Maureen.
I just have one question. Do you, is flooding a, a problem where you're all living?
As far as I can remember and from oral history, we've actually never had a flood that far north. But there's only, you know, four square miles draining into it at that point.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good morning, good afternoon. Wade Junker, and I'm here with my mother, Mary Carroll, who asked me to come forward to say a few words. I've been involved since 2004. I grew up in this area that's presented here. Our 40 acres is kind of at the bottom there, right here in the middle, about right here. And basically, they put a $2.1 million bridge in. The county did a few years back. And then up here on Dutch Hall Road, which is the county line, another bridge was put in for a little less. It was about 1.8 million. I, I, I don't have the true number, but that's what I've heard. The last public meeting to release the final draft of this report was January 10th, as mentioned. The report came out basically January 3rd. Here's the report. It's 280 pages to make it through in less than 10 days, basically, is what they gave the public to find the final answers, what they arrived at after the last feasibility report, the public meeting they had prior to that, which was before the pandemic about a year ago. So I just want to point out, you know, it's pretty hard for people that aren't hydrologists to understand this amount of response. It's not fair. Life's not always fair, but this is just the report. There's also appendices, A through H, which are also 30 to 40 pages apiece. This map comes from Appendix J, which is about 30 pages. And doesn't even give the landowners an idea of what kind of value their land's been assessed at. At the public meeting, I actually asked for, can we get those independent appraisals that the Corps has done to look at what, what, you know, what value there is in this? And then how you came up with the numbers for the condemnation process if that would have to happen. They wouldn't tell us that. That was the response. We also asked for a response to all the chat box questions that they should provide in a timely fashion. They posted all the questions on the Corps' website. And the only way for the public to get ahold of information is if they have email and internet access. And that's the same thing that's happening to a lot of families that have to do remote learning and remote business at this time. It's just a different atmosphere, we realize, but the county had opened up the, the fair meeting requirements for, you know, gatherings above, I think, 250 or 500. for, you know, gatherings above, I think, 250 or 500. Now it's up to 1,000 people can gather in a stadium or some situation. But like we're doing today with a mixed public Zoom in a feasible fashion, you know, that wasn't allowed. It wasn't occurring at the Corps' , you know, planning for having that public meeting. So that's what we asked for, a follow-up meeting where we could actually stand up here and mount a response, and there could be some back and forth. There wasn't a great deal of that during the WebEx moving, meeting. And it's kind of what I had to say today. Wasn't really coming with a prepared statement, but this affects me and my sister. This would be the farm that we would end up, you know, having for ourselves. My parents are 76, 74. They're not looking to relocate, you know? So if this gets put, if this final draft gets put in the Army Corps of Engineers budget, it goes in front of Washington next. And that happens this coming year. If it gets approved in the federal budget by the Corps of Engineers water law that will be voted upon for authorization to authorize the monies, then this project will start in '24, 2024. It'll be completed by 2029. So time is out for everyone, you know? We've been battling this, you know, our family since they moved there in '79. So thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a quick question, if I could.
Yeah, come on, you have got time. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. What's your name again?
Oh, excuse me, Wade Junker, W-A-D-E-J-U-N-K-E-R. I reside in Washington County. I'm outside of the, outside of this project. I'm four miles away. I also lived in Omaha previously.
Well, thanks for taking time out to come and speak to us, and thanks for the information. I, I don't think I've seen this 280-page study, but I'm going to ask our staff to get it for us and let us, let us look at it. And you give a good procedural outline of where this thing is and is going. It sounds like it's got a ways to go, but I appreciate your concern. Did I hear you correctly that there, on these NRD meetings, there's no ability to zoom in like we're zooming hybrid meeting today?
Yeah, the last meeting was a joint meeting. It was held by the Corps and the NRD. And yes, we could dial in. It was a WebEx, so it's a video conferencing meeting. But the format was difficult, you know? And, for example, my parents are out there. We don't even have, you know, fiber optic. We have to have a dial-up modem. It wasn't even worth it. You can't even get anything on telephone lines for speed anymore. You can't hold those video conference meetings. My parents do not use a computer. Neither does the neighbor who was mentioned earlier, who's 90 years old. You know, that's not the generation that grew up with WebEx, Zoom, and, you know, Microsoft Meet and Google Meet, you know? Just being honest with you.
Yeah, tell me about it. I get the same lecture from my children all the time. But, you know, during the pandemic, we're trying to balance things as much as we can between, you know, public health and social distancing. And so the use of Zoom, like we're using it here today, is something that's become, you know, unfortunate necessity. I was just wondering if the NRD meetings themselves are regularly Zoomed so that people don't physically have to be in the, in the room?
The NRD meetings are held only by Zoom now. I saw on their website, and we've been attending those for the last 15 years trying to oppose this as well and provide input. And the board members have switched out. There's some that are new. We're trying to educate them on what the public actually wants and what this project means being not necessary.
So just as a background, you're not an effective property owner. Your, your property is not affected by this dam. Is that correct?
No, I do not own property in this dam area. My parents do. My parents do.
Again, that's, that shows remarkable civic commitment to come out and speak to this. What, if you could, just give us a reason for your interest in this particular dam project?
My reason for it is, is there's been a number of these, there's four Army Corps of Engineer dams in the area. And what happens is, is the cost of this actually gets passed on after they're constructed. So the annual operation and maintenance cost gets given to whoever assumes a lease on that afterwards or an entitlement to run that facility. Sometimes that's the park and wrecks of the state. In this instance, it's been the parks and recreation and the budget of the city of, or the county of Douglas County. You're talking about Cunningham's, Rinsky, Standing Bear, and Weerspan. So the other lakes that have been built in the area were NRD private partnerships between their acquisition and then selling lots back to developers to develop fully around them houses. And that's not in the public's best interest. The people that live adjacent, of course, benefit a lot. And, you know, the access for the Newport Landing Lake that's out in Bennington, built by the NRD and a private developer, there's a two-and-a-half area, two-and-a-half-acre area of backwater that comes across the road where the public can enjoy fishing and shallow wading. There's been some people that have even been catching snails out there, of all things, to harvest them for eating, Asian immigrants or something. But, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, is that lake, we can't put a speedboat on it, you know? No one can instead of, you know, the public use is questionable. It's very questionable on these private partnerships. And it's been questioned a long time, and it hasn't held water. They've always defended it, but it doesn't hold water. The reservoir holds the water for those that live on that lake, not for the rest of Douglas County residents. And my interest in this is the fact that, you know, it is scary. You don't have much of a say in it, and I don't think it's right. And it affects a lot of the infrastructure the county's already put in.
Is the proposed actual footprint of this lake in Washington County or Douglas County?
It's in both. So they said because of public input, they abandoned the wet damp, wet dam with a wet pool. But the truth is, is this dry dam plan will back up water from Thomas Creek nearly halfway here, and the water will be on our property. So the house where my parents live, they could walk out the back door and not be within the 500-year flood pool footprint here, this outer dashed line. They could walk out their back door of that farmhouse right there and escape. But they're being forced to move if they, if this project goes through. They'll take the house and all the structures.
That's time. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you got any more questions?
No, that's it. Thank you. And thanks for coming down, Mr. Junker.
Yeah, thank you for your interest in this.
Wade, hold up. You got Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, a couple of things that you, that you hit on that I'd like to expand on. The Newport Dam, for example, you know, one of those dams, I think that was the one, where private citizens could get on the lake, but they were not allowed to get out of the lake because all the land was sold to private homes. So it was private property. So what I understood was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but fishermen and a man and his family could pull up there, and they, two or three of them get in a boat and go out and fish, but they were not allowed to get out of the boat. They'd have to come back to wherever they entered. I mean, this, and this is built with taxpayer dollars, you know? And that's, that's just insane.
Yeah, we're assessed on our Douglas County Assessor Bill, the NRD levy.
Yeah.
It's a big percentage that we all pay that puts these projects in. So, I mean, it's not trivial money we're talking about.
No, it's big bucks. So the other thing that you mentioned is that it's both counties. And I talked about this a little bit earlier because I was down in Lincoln, and we were lobbying against a bill that was, was to give more authority of some sort or whatever. I guess extend their bonding authority to several billion dollars, you know?
Right.
And I had a good friend from Washington County, and I was there, and we were both testifying against it and all this sort of thing. And when they found out that what we were, what he wanted was veto power from Doug, Douglas County wanted veto power over a dam, Washington County wanted veto power over a dam. And so they crafted it so that it, the statute said if a dam covers more than one county, or excuse, if a dam covers one county only, that that county can veto it. Well, they don't develop dams that do that. This is a classic example.
Right, they've extended it past the county line.
It extends up into Washington County, comes into Douglas.
Right.
Neither Washington or Douglas County can use that state law that says we have veto authority over it. It, it just doesn't exist. And that was, you know, a couple of friends of mine, Tim Gay, who was a state senator at the time, and his cousin, Hal Dobbs. And Hal was the lobbyist, and he's a good friend of mine, believe it or not. We get along great.
Yeah, the tax dollars pay for a lobbyist against the residents of the county.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're, they're good people, but they, they, they outfoxed us, you know? They really simply did. And the legislature, you know, it's, just wasn't interested or didn't, whatever it was, we didn't get our message across. It's our fault. We didn't do it. But honest to God, it's, it's just amazing. And the, the cost, I went up, a few years ago, I went up, called Washington County, went up and met with them, and was trying to talk, talk to them, and they were in favor of stopping a road project that the county had to build. We were going to tear down a road and rebuild a road at our cost to facilitate a dam they were building, and we, and we could not get it stopped. So, and it wasn't Washington County's fault. The deal was, it was just, this is the sort of thing that goes on. Pretty heavy-handed. And I think Jim Kavanaugh and I need to talk to a couple of our friends on that board and say, "Come on, guys, this is, you know, men and women. Let's get this thing kind of talked out." The last thing I want to say is that Douglas County heard all these things early on, you know, 20 years ago, whenever it was. And we came up with a low-impact development plan that takes care of water, and it's, it's very friendly to the environment. And it is, you know, if, if, you know, low-impact development was used across the, across this whole area here, there is no need for dams. I mean, it is the sort of thing that takes water and filters it through the ground, and it's, you look at, right now, we have our Department of Environmental Services. We have one of these, one of these projects over in front of the library over on 42nd and Center Street. And you see them occasionally, you know, at, at UNMC on Leavenworth Street. They've got gardens with water, places with rock on it. That's where the water goes. They don't build these big lakes there. They build places where water can naturally re-enter the earth. And I'm telling you, with President Biden in office and stopping the, the oil, that, that dirty oil coming in and passing over the Ogallala Aquifer, perhaps that administration is interested in enforcing some good, solid environmental laws that are, that actually will benefit the public.
Yeah.
So I, I can't thank you enough for coming by and all the people here. And I appreciate your speaking on behalf of your family and your own personal homestead. I think that's just heart-wrenching to me. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone listening to me and taking this into, into account. Last thing I'd put forward, I got a little time, maybe. There's two families in this area that have received 100-year Pioneer Farm Awards.
Oh.
So they've been there physically 100 years, the same family. Ours has been there since '79. So what is that, 20 plus 20, 40, going on 40-plus years? The other thing is, is the barn that our family has in that area, the beams came out of the 1898 Trans Mississippi Expo. So I'm kind of researching that with the WDD Dale Clark Library here, head research reference librarian. To give providence to this would be the only way to stop this with eminent domain looming over your head. You know, to, to get an antique roadshow seal of approval on that barn might be the only way to stop this.
Thank you, Wade.
Thanks a lot, Wade. Appreciate it very much.
Anyone else?
My name's Craig Abel, C-R-A-I-G-E-B-E-L, and I am one of the property owners directly affected with, by Dam Site 10. I believe I'm parcel 22 and 23.
Can you get them?
I, I believe I'm parcel 22 and 23 right here. 22, my residence is on. 23 is farm ground behind me, which, which my family owns. I appreciate your guys' time today and hearing our concerns. One of my main concerns that I want to shed a little bit of light on is this study conducted by the Corps of Engineers has been going on for roughly three years. They're using data that Commissioner or a friend indicated was 1964. So we're 50-plus years out on all these different data points that we're trying to make, they're trying to make some type of educated guess on what's going to happen or potentially going to happen for a, for a rain event. The NRD has also used the same data points. It is their data points that the Corps of Engineers is going off of. Dam Site 10 is a low priority on the NRD's to-do list. It's eighth or ninth down in their potential dams that they would like constructed. Now the Corps of Engineers comes along, takes three years, analyzes the same data that's outdated by 50-plus years. They come up with Dam Site 10 as a priority. So my question here today is who's right and who's wrong? The Corps of Engineers and the NRD's sole purpose is public safety. So how can one dam site be eighth or ninth on a priority list done by the NRD, and the Corps, and it's the number-one dam site needed under the Corps of Engineers? To me, as an effective landowner, as well as, as a human, Christian human myself, trying to protect somebody downstream, I believe it's creating false, false security. If public safety is the number-one priority here, why are those two organizations or two studies, why aren't those the same? That should be the top priority coming from the Corps of Engineers as well as our local NRD.
That's a good point.
Yep, that, that's, that's one key point that I like to shed some light on here today, and I appreciate your guys' time. And time is of the essence. To my knowledge, this study gets up towards the upper chain of command through the Corps of Engineers by September, and then this goes before Congress in 2022 to get voted upon. So time is of the essence here. As well as the last meeting that I attended in, that the Corps of Engineers, as well as the NRD, had together, my voice was never heard. It was in a chat box that never got answered. I had additional questions that, that never got answered. So I do appreciate your guys' time today and at least hearing our concerns.
Yeah, you got time still for questions?
I want to quickly say, it's astounding what you, what you just said to me, said to all of us. I would like to ask you, any of you who do have questions, and particularly those that got expired in your chat boxes, get them to us, and I guarantee you, I personally, if not through the board in some way, I will ask the NRD for answers on your behalf. So please do that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So you know the questions. Thank you, Craig. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question for this.
Come on, Commissioner Kavanaugh. You got, you've got two minutes, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Abel, for coming down. Is your property in Douglas or Washington Counties?
It is in Douglas County. I'm, I'm one mile south of Dutch Hall Road, which is the county line.
Okay. And, you know, I'm just trying to get up to speed on this. My understanding is this is a dry dam. Is that correct?
That is what they're proposing as of right now. It was considered a, a wet dam initially. They came back and said a dry dam. What is also interesting here is when they switched this over to a dry dam, they added 18 feet of, of height needed for a dry dam. So it, it's affecting more and more people. As you add feet on the dry dam, it's just backing that water up even further. And now it is in Washington County as well. So we've got multiple counties being affected.
So, and, and I would hope that somebody from the NRD So, and, and I would hope that somebody from the N R D would come and speak to this, if not, it would make sense to lay it over so that we could get their analysis, but if, if it's a dry dam, is the land, uh, subject to the dam area still farmable?
It is farmable within the flood plain or, or within the, the easement, but what they neglected to point out is that, that farm ground that could be farmed, you can't get federal crop insurance on it, so who's going to farm it? I mean, nobody's going to invest the money in the, in the, what it takes to farm an acre of ground today. No one's gonna, nobody's going to put forth that investment today if they can't get federal crop insurance on it.
I see. Well, thank you for that, and thanks for taking the time out of your day to come and, and brief us on this. We really appreciate it.
Yep, and, and I do appreciate everybody's time here today as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm, uh, I'm Larry Cotton, I live in-
Uh, Mr. Cotton, you want to bring that mic closer to you so we can hear you real quick?
Oh.
Well, pull the other one too, that-
Oh, this one?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Larry Cotton, I live at 13645 North 126th Street, about in the middle of the dam here. In 2004, the ma, it was a wet dam, and I wasn't even impacted, the map said not impacted. A year ago, they took about half of my property, but still left the buildings and the house. And then all of a sudden, this year, it's a dry dam, and they want to take everything. I'd, I'd like to comment on Ms. Boyle's question about the flooding. I've lived there over 30 years, and the Thomas Creek has never went out of its banks. I drive over it at least two or three times a day. So, uh, in 1992 and 93, it came close, but it didn't go out of its banks. I also have three rescue horses and a rescue miniature donkey, and one of the horses is nearly blind, and, uh, so I'm not supposed to even change anything on my property, let alone move. So, anyway, uh, I just wanted to come up and comment about the flooding at Thomas Creek. It never has in over 30 years that I've lived there. I'm a newbie there compared to everybody else. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Seeing none. Anyone else in the audience?
Thank you, Commissioners, thanks for the time. My name is Mick Mines, M I C K M I N E S. I live at 636 Hillcrest Drive. I have been the registered lobbyist for Papio Valley Preservation Association in, in Lincoln for over a dozen years. So I've seen what this, this group of nine now, property owners, has been through. Certainly Commissioner Boyle, you have been a strong advocate of their rights for many, many years. It, it seems to me, it seems to me that from the, the, every public body has their own charge. You, you have your mission, and, and so does the, the Natural Resource District. It seems to me the bar has kept moving over, since 1968, on what, what needs to be accomplished in this territory. Back then, they were going to flood the village of Washington and half of, of Kennard, and, but for Washington County, and this group, and the support of Douglas County, that didn't happen. And what public bodies have, as you know, is they have time. They have time and money to continue pushing an agenda. Now, I don't begrudge the N R D for, for their agenda, I think that they have an agenda, but they also have a lot of money. They are the second-largest, the second-largest tax base in the state, next to the state. They, they have, and, and yes, their, their levy is maybe four cents, and they can bond outside of that, they have a lot of money, and they have time. And, and I just have to say that these, these folks that I represent, they may be only nine property owners, but they're standing against the, the N R D and the Corps, there's, they've got some big folks facing them. So I, I would just ask that, at one point, you know, we had a big rain event two years ago. It was a 500-year rain event, and it, Papio Valley didn't flood. It, and it, it came from all, all places, but I think someone made the point earlier, it didn't flood from the Elkhorn Valley East, or Elkhorn River East, it didn't flood from Washington County South. So I mean, there, you can understand where they're coming from, there, you can understand that your support, your proclamation by this body, really, all it is is support, and, and they would appreciate that, they've got Washington County's support, and I know that Director Thompson from the N R D is, is online, we, so I, maybe he'll have some comments as well. So, thank you.
Senator, you may have a question, um, from another former senator, Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Mines, if you squeezed the clock back about maybe 10 years, what, this discussion was going on then too. I mean, I remember it, and, and we used to, we used to talk about it. One of the things that I, what, that I've heard is time is of the essence. You agree with that? I mean, you, you think that this is on the fast track at this point, right?
As, as fast as government moves, federal government moves, you know, they're just looking for a letter of support. You know it, that it, it won't stand in the court, in the courts, it won't stand, but just confirmation that this body agrees that it, things are moving a bit fast, and that taking land for a purpose that maybe is questionable is the right thing to do.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mick, and here's the thing, I already laid out earlier that I have a philosophical disagreement with eminent domain. I have a huge problem with it, I always have. I don't have a philosophical disagreement on its face with the N R D, and I, I, I know Commissioner Tom, I, I'd be interested in hearing some dialogue too. We're not laying this over. My philosophical disagreement with eminent domain is strong, and I don't, I don't care what their view is here, I guess is my point.
Yeah.
Because A, Commissioner Boyle pointed out that this resolution means something, but it's worth the paper it's written on, right? They, they can just disregard it. B, um, it's not going to change my philosophical disagreement with what they're trying to do.
Right.
So I'd say we go forward with it, pass this thing and move on. Thank you, Mick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other comments?
My name is Robert Harper, I'm from 508 Main Street, Kenner, Nebraska. I'm a past president of the Papio Valley Preservation Association, and in 1976, I can give you a little background, that I was working for Mel Hoyer, and when I was a senior in high school, I wrote a thesis paper on the N R D and, and on the dams, and whether they were needed or not. The one thing I'm here today to show you, if you can put that map up there one more time, is that, you know, we sit and look at it, and it's flat. What you don't see out here is Highway 133 coming straight up, Highway 36 that comes straight across and, and goes over, you know, to the Bennington area. So what you got to understand, when you're looking at this, the trapezoid of it, is that this is a bowl. When you start on this north end up in Washington County, and how this is such a small bowl, that all this is a terrace on 133, this all runs over into Lake Cunningham. This whole side of 133 runs to Lake Cunningham. There's another hill that comes right down this side and runs into all these tributaries that go over into 36, and this all feeds into the Papio Valley, into the, into the Papio Creek. And so what we're talking about is how much flood value are you getting, and, and if you go to the north, I want you to understand on the north side is where the, the airport is, the Blair Airport, you know, Washington County Airport. So anyhow, this is a curve here, and this all runs this way, this all runs this way, so what you're getting out of here is like one-half of 1% in your flood control, and it's been that way, and this is in 2020, 2021, and it's been that way since 1964. So when they come to us and start saying, well, this is all for flood control, this is for flood control, well, what flood control are you getting out of this at one-half of 1%? You're not getting any. So we sit and fight this, and we sit and go, come against them, and when I say fight is not the right word. We, we, we try to be what is, good citizens, we try to be good neighbors, we try to be what we need to be in order to do flood control. And when Tyler Moore starts talking about it, and when our farmers start talking about it, we've, we've terraced this area, we've put thousands of miles of terraces in, we've put different waterways, we've put green space, we've done everything that they've asked us to do, and yet it's still, this is what we want, we still want dams, we still want dams. Now, all this that runs over into Lake Cunningham, which, you know, if you get this right, on Highway 36, Lake Cunningham is about a mile and a half to two miles to the east, and on the south side. Lake Cunningham was going to be one of the jewels of, of their dam sites, of what they had. All this beautiful blue water and all these beautiful homes around it, Lake Cunningham, right now, they've had to dredge two to three times, trying to get the silt out of it, just so they could have water in this dam. And, and it is, it's an eyesore. It is absolutely full to the, from the south end to the north end, you know, from the dam site, all the way north up into it. So you guys can go look at it, I guarantee you, with Sean and Tyler, we'd give tours if you wanted to come out and see it. We'd take you through Washington County, take you up and down Dutch Hall, we'd take you up and, and show you how this is a whole bowl that just runs down to, to, just on the north side of Highway 36. So that being said, I appreciate your time, and guys, I, we can't do these things without you guys, and, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
You got a question, sir? Commissioner Boyle?
Uh, yes, your, your testimony is compelling, to say the least, everyone really, I'm listening carefully, and you're, you're presenting facts, and in a very non-emotional way, and I congratulate you, because I'm one of those people that kind of goes off the handle once in a while, so I'm glad I'm not. In any event, I want to ask you, you say Lake Cunningham, and I, that's one of the things that I had forgotten about, and you just brought it to the forefront, is the maintenance. Someone was talking, I think, about the maintenance and operations costs and all the rest, and who pays for that? And I, you know, one of those, one of those little shellfish or something that gets in the water, dams the whole, takes the whole thing away, and you got to drain the whole deal.
The zebra snail.
Right. So I really wondered, so you're saying that, I didn't realize that about Cunningham, that it, it has been dredged twice at tremendous cost, and I wonder who's paying for that? Do you know?
Sean? The city of Omaha.
City of Omaha, okay, good. Well, I live downtown in the Brandeis Building, so I'm glad to contribute to that.
But, and, and Mr. Boyle, you know, the next thing when you look at these dams, you know, and, and of course, I would say Newport Landing, they put this up and they, and they disguise it as flood control, they disguise it as this, but then the next things they don't tell you is we got three, you know, 80,000 gallon-per-minute pumps that are sitting down at the base of the Papio Creek that pump water out of the Papio Creek up into the dam, so water stays in there. And that's, that's the God's truth. I mean, look it up, see if I'm lying, I mean, there is, there is pumps down there, and when you talk to the N R D, ask them about it. So what kind of flood valuation is there on that Newport Landing? What kind of flood evaluation is on, on Lake Cunningham now? And then they come over here and, oh, we need this one on, on Dam Site 10. It's one-half of 1% is any of the flood control that gets it, and it doesn't even come down into Omaha, you know, it, it, as far as, does it run there eventually? Yes, it does, and I'm sorry about saying that. But it's like, it, it dissipates before it ever hits into Douglas County, so.
So, let me ask you another, is the Pap, does the Papio start up there, or what, what brings it into Omaha?
Well, the Papio starts up north of, of Arlington, up, up, you know, towards Hooper, Logan View, up in that area.
Okay.
And it's just fed by all the tributaries.
Right.
So by the time it gets past Arlington, and, and I live in Kennard, so when it times gets to Kennard, there's two branches on both sides of Kennard, and roughly three, that it runs right on the south side of Kennard, and that's where they all feed into, and then that's where it runs into Omaha, you know, through Kennard, through Washington, down into Bennington.
Okay.
That is the Papio Creek.
Now-
Not this one, no, this, this one here does not flow into the Papio Creek, this, this, you know-
Well, let me, let me ask you, you know, one of the things that was said to me was that this is to protect Exarban.
You know, and Mr. Boyle, you can, and, and I've lived there, I've been there 63 years, I've lived in Washington County, I, I have, my wife has a business in Washington that I work for.
Yeah.
And, and so I know the area, I've been on every road in that county and every road in Douglas County, and, and I can tell you, when you go across Dam Site 10, at least nine out of 10 years, you can walk across that creek and not get your feet wet. We have had the same thing at the Papio Creek, north of Washington, where, here in the last few years, where we've had a little bit of a drought, you can walk across that without getting your feet wet, and they, and they know it. You know, the people that are trying to put these through, they do know that, so it, it's where it gets tough as a landowner and as a businessman and, and that, to say, come on, guys.
Yeah.
And we've fought this now for, Mick, how many years? It's, it's been, you know, since 64, but I'm, I'm just saying, we've gone down to the N R D, we've gone down to the, the meetings, you know, every, every time we go down to them, and it's nothing but a constant struggle, is the right word.
Thank you, Mr. Harper, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Looking out, anyone else? Alrighty, there's no other questions, anything out there on the board? Anything on Zoom? Seeing none?
Are we, are we done discussing this?
Uh, we're done, and, and comments, uh, time is up, so I'm just trying to see if there's other Commissioners or other people in the audience for Zoom. There's a motion and a second on this. I don't sense any will in the chamber to lay this over, I'm looking at heads, that is correct, there's no will to lay this over, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Zoom, and in the chamber, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I abstain.
Commissioner Morgan?
Voting yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh abstained. All of the, Commissioner Morgan and Borgeson voted yes virtually, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One, one abstention.
Yes.
Thank you all. You can leave if you want to.
Boy, thanks a million. Thank you all.
We'll go now to the committee to go back up to finance, the budget report, I'm assuming is that submitted? Commissioner Friend?
Ye, yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Uh, we'll go on to item two, is a resolution creating a strategy, a strategy committee to hear requests and updates, and to make recommendations to the board in regards to the upcoming. I like to change that, that should be the American Rescue Act, not the CARES II, or just federal funding in general. Is there a motion and second to approve item two?
So move?
There's motion by Commissioner Boyle, I'll second, looking out. All in, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Zoom.
Yeah, can I?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, as we discussed last time, this is a function of the Finance Committee, not a special subcommittee, it has a partisan tilt to it, that if, if these Republicans on the committee are part of the same party, they all voted in Congress against the American Rescue Act, so we're putting people in charge who are from the part of the spectrum that's against the actual act itself, and I think that's unfortunate. There's no reason for this subcommittee to exist, other than to take power out of the public eye and put it in the back rooms, again, as has been done repeatedly by portions of this board, and the Finance Committee should hold regular public hearings, not only on this, but on the public budget too. They don't do either, it's really questionable why the Finance Committee even exists, if they're not going to do their job. So I'm going to vote against this attempt to take out of the public domain the discussion on this enormous amount of money.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Boyle?
I, I, I am going to vote no also, but I, I can understand, and I have a better understanding after questions I've asked, so I'm going to trust, and I, I'm not concerned about the party affiliation of, of the members of this board, I simply, that just simply doesn't exist in my mind. I don't, I don't, I don't look at this on a partisan basis, I, I can understand, I guess, but I don't see it that way, and I don't think that's what happens. I just looked at the last vote that took place, and, you know, Commissioner Friend was involved with me in sponsoring it, so I just, I just don't have a problem with that, so, but I am voting no, just out of principle. Thank you.
With that, seeing none, there's a motion and a second. Oh, sorry.
I have a question when we're done.
Okay, I got you. Um, go ahead, Louise.
Thanks. Louise Humana, 3306 Birch Street. Oh, I just want to say that I'm glad that you made their day on, on the previous resolution. It was nice to see. Commissioner Rogers, you're my Commissioner, so you really, sometimes you have to listen to, to your constituents, even if you're giving them paper. Anyway, I just want to point out that Commissioner Rogers, you corrected the submission on your agenda, that this is a, a re, a committee. What's that?
I just corrected the, the term, that it's not the CARES Act II, it's the American Rescue Act.
So, yeah, the American Rescue Act for 1.9 trillion?
Hmm, that's not stated there, but it's just, that's the only thing-
That's the federal funding?
Yes.
The, the bulk?
If it stands, if it stands, that's where it is.
Okay. Yes, that, that's what, uh- Yes, that's what the issue is. What is going to be passed? What kind of rescue package is going out to the, well, here for the county? I don't think that this is the Strategy Committee. Strategy Committee is a subcommittee. If it was a subcommittee, then it wouldn't have to be open to the public. I think from what I hear is that this is an ad hoc committee comparable to your standing committees?
No, it's just a committee that'll recommend the process for the board to approve in public. That's all.
So there's going to be a process for this particular money?
If we get the money.
If you get the money. Is this process in place for money that comes from the state?
Process was in place for money that came from the Fed last time.
For the state money?
No, for the CARES Act money, this process was in place.
Okay. So this is the process that was being used?
That's what we use for CARES.
Okay, but I thought it was this committee of a whole that was in place last year.
No, this committee is just setting up, and I clarified yesterday, is setting up a process for the board to approve in public. And then, I'm assuming, then that committee of the whole will address matters that come with that money if we get it.
So I have, I've had a question about two hundred million dollars that's supposed to be divvied up by force political subdivisions, and then I heard there's a hundred and twelve million dollars somewhere.
It's not accurate. If it stands, if it stands, if it stands in the bill like it is, the state of Nebraska.
Yeah, but the two hundred million, yeah, the two hundred million I'm talking about was, is from the state that hasn't been, you know, the amount for Douglas County hasn't been.
This is not this money. That's not, this has nothing to do with that.
Go ahead, if you can provide something.
Well, before you go, this money is just if we get funding from state and local aid that comes down.
This is new money.
This is money that's just possible. It's not even confirmed yet.
And I think it's three hundred and fifty billion for local?
Across the country.
Across the country, yeah. Okay, well.
The two hundred million dollars that you're referencing, I'm assuming you're referencing that the state and the governor announced, has nothing to do with this.
See, and I want some information from that.
That's the state's, that's not ours.
And one last comment is that since you're commissioners, you're still going to be able to put allocations on your agenda without having to go through the committee process, right? Because then that would be kind of.
Money outside of this, if this money comes. This is just a process to figure out how to use that money if it comes.
Okay, so kind of like to be able to say no before it gets to the agenda? I mean, before it is placed?
This is only talking about process. Anything to do with spending that comes before the public as anything else did.
I'm trying to figure this out, but I think this is a, if it's a regular committee, I trust it's going to be open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, we just wanted to clarify on the motion that you are amending the language in the resolution instead of saying CARES Act Two. It would say American Rescue Plan. So we'll include that when we do the resolution as an amendment to the motion.
However you need to do it.
Okay.
Right now, there's, you can just do it by unanimous consent. There's not a lot of contention. All right. There's motion and a second. Please call the roll on Zoom and vote internally.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh voting no.
Thank you. We'll go on to item three, which is a resolution directing the county board administrative staff to prepare an agreement for the chair's signature for the Christian Outreach Program in Elkhorn, known as Cope, to administer a rental utility assistance program within the areas of Douglas County outside the city of Omaha. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Questions?
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
This is the Christian Outreach Program. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, the Christian Outreach Program of Elkhorn, is that a church affiliate of some kind?
Jim or Jane, do you want to talk about your organization?
Commissioner Boyle, you can answer that. Maureen Boyle.
Actually, I looked, I looked it up just to make sure that it was thrown. And it's actually a, it's a Christian Outreach Program of Elkhorn is what it is. And it's, they do all kinds of things, not just rental assistance, but they'll do food pantries and such. And so, yes, it's a, there are about eight churches involved, and then there are other food pantry types of places involved. So it's, so there is a Christian affiliation to it.
Sorry, Mary, Commissioner Borgeson, you said there's somebody online on Zoom that can answer it?
Yes, this is Jim, this is Jim Tamanik. I'm the executive director of Cope.
Go ahead, sir, if you want to add anything else.
I'll just add in there that we are operated, are owned by about ten different churches in the western Douglas County area. We've been in existence for about fifteen years, and we do provide food pantries, clothing, household goods, furniture, rent, and utility assistance already. And we offer those assistance mostly in the western Douglas County area.
So can I ask you, you're a nonprofit like Catholic Charities?
That's true, yes. We're a five oh one C three.
Got it. Okay.
And thank you for that. You say there are ten churches affiliated, is that correct?
Yes. In the, we have three in Valley, there's about, there's one in Bennington, and six in Elkhorn.
That's great. Do you have a list of those maybe you could share with us? The churches that are affiliated?
Sure.
Thank you.
Seeing no, you got a question?
I have another question. I just want to make sure that the allocation is quite a bit of money, and I just want to make sure, do you have some type of plan in place to get that done? Do you think you'd be able to do it with the current services you provide?
We are working on a software package right now that's going to help us greatly, and it will be able to allow us to assist all of the people in western Douglas County and also in Rolston. We're looking to add that group also.
Good, good. I know that you have an affiliation with MATCH, and they're, they've been doing this, so just make sure.
Yes, we've been, right, MATCH has been doing it for the city of Omaha, and we have been in discussions with MATCH and getting information from them also on how to administer these funds.
Okay, perfect. Just make sure that you can do it as efficient as possible, and you have what you need to do it. Thanks.
You're good.
Good.
There's a motion and a second. Come on, Louise.
Thank you. This is Louise Jimenez in Omaha. I just was done talking to the administrator, and he pointed out the two hundred million dollars that I've been trying to figure out, like what are, what's happening with it. I'm told that twenty-six million dollars of that is for rent assistance and utility assistance in Douglas County.
Twenty-six million dollars, twenty-two million dollars with the city, four million dollars with Douglas County.
Four million dollars, and that's what's going to?
That's what this is.
The, okay, so, and the rest is going to be administered by the state?
Twenty-two million is administered by the city. The state is the two hundred million that we have nothing to do with.
The balance.
Well, yeah, that balance is there.
Okay, now, that's what I'm trying to communicate, that those, that money and how it's being used, I'm trying to figure that out, and there's a lot of money coming in.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep you on subject on this item, but we can't tell you how the two hundred is being used. That's the state.
No, I didn't, wasn't going to ask about that. I was just commenting on that.
I'm gonna keep you on this item and not go to the state.
So the four point three million, that's, all of it is going into this resolution?
I don't think it's four point three. I think it's four.
It's four million?
Yes. For rental assistance and utilities.
So this is going to have two sides to the money, which is rent assistance and utility assistance?
Yes.
And is there a clear division of that right now?
I, Patrick, you want?
So we're gonna, we're gonna negotiate and prepare a contract for the chair's signature, which we'll lay out. We might, of that four, and I think it is four point three.
Oh, it is.
Well, what we might do is do it in two parts. So maybe two million right away, and then maybe two million later, because we want to make sure that the money is spent appropriately, or Cope, they may not need four million. So if you give them two million upfront and then two million, if they need the next two million, then we have a smooth transition to that. Rent and utilities, and they're developing a program, and we'll prepare a contract that complies with all federal regulations, working with the county attorney, and then we'll have the chair sign it.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Commissioner Boyle, sorry.
Yes, I was wondering whether some of this money, we could allow them to, if it's connected, if we could allow them to use it for the, to pay for the programming and the computer work that they have to do to accommodate this program. It seems like if it is COVID-related, maybe they should encourage them to include the cost if that, if that's possible.
There'll be an administrative fee that will be put into the contract. Of that four point three million, what we're looking at is six percent that they could retain as an administrative cost of that amount, so they can pay for the, whatever systems they need to put in place.
Okay, that's good. That makes a lot of sense. And then I was wondering, too, will the contract just be for rental assistance? Or can it be for something more broad? Can it be for food and other things?
No, it's just rent utilities.
Just rental and utility. We don't have utilities in there, I don't think. Oh, yeah, you do. Excuse me, my fault. Yeah, okay, if it's limited to that, then that's, that's the only thing we can do.
Right.
This looks like a really good approach. First of all, I want to say I'm really glad that we're using a successful nonprofit to handle this money. I think that makes a great deal of sense. I think, keep it local. They know how to operate, and so I'm really happy with this. This is a good, good idea and a good relationship.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. Roll call Zoom, please vote in the chamber.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes. And Commissioner Rogers, if we could just request, I know the contract, there was an amount in the resolution, so we would just request that once the contract is signed, it doesn't have to come back to the board, but please make sure a copy is filed with the clerk's office.
Of course. Of course.
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment as well?
Please.
This is Commissioner Marion Borgeson, and I just want to thank the organization for stepping up and working with us, and look forward to the partnership as we get these resources out to the folks in need in western Douglas County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to item G, human resources. Item one is the weekly personnel report as submitted. Item two is legislative issues, and there's one item under there for discussion and action. That is L B one eighty-nine. And there, we can take action today. It is L B one eighty-nine, change provisions relating to property tax refunds. There's a motion to oppose that. Is there a motion to oppose one eighty-nine? A motion by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. I'll second it. Questions, concerns? We talked about it upstairs a couple of weeks ago. You got questions, Commissioner Boyle?
I'll, I'll second it. Is this, I'll second it, but is this the one?
No, Marcos, you want to read?
I'm curious about why we're, I gotta be refreshed on why we're opposing it.
Marcos.
Sure. Marcos S. Martin, Douglas County Administration. So L B one eighty-nine, this was laid over from last week. L B one eighty-nine is a bill where it's introduced by Senator Halloran, and the portion of the bill that we're concerned about is that it would char, it would, it would require the county to pay nine percent interest on any property tax refund that the treasurer's office issues. And so it would be a significant cost to us in the future.
Seeing no questions, roll call Zoom. And note, you got the motion and a second, is here?
Yes, we, motion by Maureen Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Got it. Roll call Zoom, please vote in the chamber.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just have one kind of procedural question on this, if I could. And Marcos, this is for you, actually. So the hearing was February tenth, at which point, you know, people would come forward and state their position for the record. So in terms of us passing a resolution now, almost a month after the hearing, what form does that take? The bill is still in committee. There's no ability, I don't believe, to supplement the committee statement with our position. So what happens to this resolution effectively?
Sure, so Commissioner Kavanaugh, if this board does decide to oppose one eighty-nine today, that will direct our lobbyist in Lincoln to be sure that he opposes any legislation that may contain language from one eighty-nine or, you know, charging interest on property tax refunds that would be included on the floor of the legislature. You know, so that will be one case. Another case would be if this bill does make it out of the revenue committee, we'll oppose it then. So yes, this, essentially, you doing this today would give Sean Kelly direction of how to act in Lincoln.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Continue to vote, please.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Okay, all commissioners have voted. Commissioner Friend votes no. Motion passes.
Okay, I'm aware of no other legislation. With that, we have no need for executive session. Is there most adjourned?
So move.
There's motion by Commissioner Friend, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan.
That's all right.
Please vote. Roll call Zoom.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Borgeson.
Borgeson.
Yeah, I know.
I did that.
I know.
I've done it.
Thank you, all. We are adjourned.
No executive session, huh?